Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oil and Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We are, we're also excited that Julie and Colin have joined us today. Hey guys.
Hi everyone.
How you doing everyone?
And hello to you. Let us know where you're coming in from in the chat. We are so thrilled to have all of you here. We as a team are excited to be able to help you grow your Young Living Brand Partner Business, whether you've just got and started, or you are years into this lifestyle of sharing. We at Get Oil have everything that you need under one roof to help you get your customers educated, serve them well, and save you time in the process, as well as helping you to brand yourself and build a smarter, more sustainable business for the long haul. Today, we're going to be talking about Done For You content that Get Oil releases once a month. So we'll be sharing that content with you today and showing you exactly how to put this to use in your business. So welcome again, excited to have you here live on the call. As always, we are live every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time. So our team is going to pop out a video so that we can get into some slides and demos that we've prepared for you. We'll come back and join you here in just a bit on video. But for now, let's go ahead and get into what we've prepared for you today. Today, we're talking about our Done For You content. Again, this is something that we released as of right now, just a couple of months back. These are weekly wellness tips that you can share with leads and customers. They're designed to help you be more present in the inboxes of those you want to show up and serve with content. And of course, it allows you to introduce Young Living in a way that is simple and effective. So today, we're going to learn about this and how to put it to use. So let's get into it. Today, we're going to cover how this Tip Tuesday funnel works to help you nurture leads and educate your customers. We're going to learn how to apply and manage this funnel each month to stay consistent without extra effort. And don't worry if you don't know what a funnel is or what I'm talking about, you're going to see just how easy this is here in just a few minutes. You're going to turn, learn how to use this system to gently introduce Young Living without a hard sell. And of course, as always, as this is a live work session, we are here for live helping Q and A. So if you've got questions, we've got incredibly qualified people here from our team here to help you on this call. You can put those questions into the Q and A. If it's something that requires us to maybe look at something together, we've got the option to do that. But guys, if you ever send an email in to us, there's a really high chance that you're going to be meeting Julie, Colin, or even Greg when you get your response. And they're here for you live on these calls on Thursdays. So feel free to ask away. It's a great chance to, to get real time feedback and information if you are working in Get Oil and using us to grow your brand partner business. Now, if you would like to work with us on a future call like this one, we are live, like I mentioned, every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time. You can go to getoil.com/weeklyworksession to be on these calls, be notified of what's coming up next, and be the first to receive resources like the resources that you guys have received here today. If you want to work together on a call like this, that's an option as well. So maybe you have a bit more of an involved question, or you're working on a project that you want feedback on. This is an option as well, and it's totally free. Go to getoil.com/webstatereview to sign up for dedicated space on one of these calls. We dedicate the second half of these live calls every week to this purpose. And Heather, if you are here, go ahead and pop your hand up. Let me know that you're here. I'll be bringing you out in the second half of this call to work together as you've signed up for a call here today. Now, if you would like a hand getting things done, if you have a project that you would like to hand off to an expert, we've got experts for you, whether you want to get a website done, you need hands-on help, handholding. With getting started with any of these systems that you can put into place with Get Oil, these are all great options. Getoil.com/concierge is where you can go to learn more and schedule a zero obligation consult with our team. All right, let's talk about this Tip Tuesday funnel. First, let me know in the chat, are you using the Tip Tuesday funnel currently? Is this something that you have been putting in place the last couple of months as we have provided it to you? Let me know how that's going for you, always looking for feedback. So if you're unfamiliar, the Tip Tuesday funnel is, is a way to help you to stay, like I mentioned before, in your people's inboxes, right? That's your leads, that's your customers. It's helping them to build a habit of interacting with you and the content that you put out. And the reason why it's important for you to be consistently showing up in the inboxes of the people that you want to reach, whether they be customers or leads, is that most people aren't ready to take action when you're ready to speak to them, right? Whether that's when you decide to send out a newsletter, or when you want to send an invitation to review information, most people aren't necessarily aligned with you in the moment, right? So we need to be able to expose and educate and nurture on an ongoing basis, right? And your customers also need some guidance and tips and help on their wellness journey. And this funnel provides you with small actionable steps, right? This removes you from needing to get creative or become an expert on product usage. If you are brand new to Young Living and you want to provide tips to your people, you may not have them yet, but we do. And that's what this is for, is to provide you with little things that you can supply your customers and your leads with to get them more curious about products that they maybe haven't considered yet, or use cases for products that they haven't considered yet. This allows you to create and maintain consistent touchpoints so that you can build trust and engagement over time with leads and with customers. And it allows you to introduce Young Living products in a way that is natural and contextual to topics that are relevant to your ideal customer or your current customer, right? So this allows your leads to easily take the next step. And it allows your customers to take in information without that sort of salesy sense of urgency, right? That can come about when you're only maybe sending something out to people if there is a sale, or if this is the gift with purchase, et cetera, right? This is really about helping people to learn things that can improve their lives and showing that Young Living can be a part of that step that they can take, right? We're just shifting the context slightly. We're still sharing product, but we're doing this in a way that is not overly promotional or salesy, and it's really effective for both leads and customers. So here's how it works. Your leads are going to opt in on the landing page for your weekly Tuesday tips. Now, our customers, of course, can do this as well. The confirmation message that pops up after they put in their name and email, potentially their phone as well, on that form is going to set expectations. It's essentially going to tell them what they can expect to see from you and when they can expect to see it. So this is going to be weekly tips, some product recommendations, and they're going to receive these every Tuesday. Now, it's important to note that they're not going to receive an email from you right away. This is also shared in that confirmation pop-up message. So there's nothing for them to look for, right? This is going to be sent the following Tuesday. And because these campaigns that you'll see here in just a bit that we're using for the Tip Tuesday funnel are date-based, you don't have to worry about where someone is in the week, right? If it's Thursday when they opt in, you'll know that the next email they'll receive from you is that following Tuesday, the one after that, and so on for this particular month. And then the last week of the month, you're just going to swap out the campaign, right? So today, if you've been using this funnel already, let's say maybe you grabbed the resource bundle back in March. You got the landing page, you got the March campaign, maybe you swapped out the April campaign for the March one. And now you're ready because we are in the, what, third week of April. You want to be prepared before the end of this month, so after the, the last Tuesday of this month, to swap out that campaign for the May one so that next month they can continue to receive your current tips, right? Now, this is what it looks like. We've got a landing page. And it's got some copy there already for you. This is all compliance stuff. It's got some images. And if you have the Show My Story and Photo enabled, it'll show up here as well, potentially a custom footer if you're using one, right? So you'll have a landing page. This again is a separate resource bundle that you can claim. I'll show you where to get all of this here in just a moment, but this is going to be useful to you no matter what your plan level is. You don't have to be at any particular plan level in Get Oil to use this, whether you're at seed, starter, all the way up to diamond plans, you can use this landing page. Now, this confirmation pop-up message is going to show up after your lead or customer puts their information in the field, like we're doing right here. And you'll see there's a pop-up message here. It's got a bit of information for them to read, just to give them an idea of what they're going to be seeing. It gives them an opportunity to click to contact you if they need to. And then, of course, the final button on that pop-up is going to send them to your webpage. Now, then they're going to receive whatever campaign is attached to that landing page. And what we're going to be doing at the end of this month is taking the campaign I share with you today, which is for May, and we're going to swap that out with the April campaign. So they're going to receive every Tuesday an email, and you'll see that they're structured more or less the same way. When we, when we read these, you can see that I've got a little bit of a title. We're kind of introducing a topic. We're giving a tip. And then we're sharing how we can utilize this tip with Young Living products. Now, the links that you see in here where they link to products, and there's usually going to be two products, sometimes there's three, that we're linking to, these are already coded to your Young Living member number, right? And this is really exciting because if a lead is receiving this campaign, when they click one of these links, it's going to send them to the Young Living website with you as the enroller and sponsor, which is pretty, pretty cool. So let's talk about how we manage this, and I will walk through how we'll do this as well. So no worries if this is still kind of new to you. So what we're going to do the last week of every month, we're going to do the following. We're going to swap out the new campaign on that landing page for the next month's campaign. So right now, we're in April. We're going to be swapping that out for the May campaign. But do make sure, don't do it today unless you're just getting started with this. Do this next, next week. So after the next Tuesday, you want to make sure that you do this after the final Tuesday of the month. And then we're going to filter our leads for weekly wellness tips because that's the tag we have on our landing page when people opt in. And we're going to apply the new month's campaign. Because what we want to make sure that we do, right, when we swap the campaign out on the landing page, we're making sure that any new leads are receiving the correct information. But what about the people who signed up previously, right? The people who signed up in April and March, et cetera. We need to make sure that those people are going to receive the May messages as well. So this is where we're actually going to filter for those contacts by looking up their tag, which is applied on the landing page when they opt in. And then we're going to apply the next month's campaign. And again, this, in this case, it will be May. So this is what that looks like. We swap out our campaign on our landing page, of course, after you've claimed your resource bundle. We're just going to go to the campaign here in the landing page settings, type in Tip Tuesday, May, and you'll see your campaign pop up there if you've claimed the bundle. You can also see here where you see tags to add weekly wellness tips. Now, if you have changed this on your landing page, you're going to want to search for whatever tag you have in this field on your landing page, right? If you changed it, make sure that you were searching for the associated tag because that's going to be on the contacts who have signed up for this previously. Then this really simple process you can follow. Go to your Good Oil dashboard and click this little button or this link here where it says Send Email, Text, or App Notification, where it says Send Message, you select a campaign. Then you select the campaign, in this case, that's Tip Tuesday, May of 2025, and filter that to put on your contacts' weekly wellness tips, right? So you want to find the weekly wellness tips people and apply this campaign. And remember, this is not going to send to them until the first Tuesday in May, right? So this is something that you could go ahead and do today because there is zero consequence. There's no day zero message. They're not going to get anything right away. They're going to start receiving these messages in May. So this is something you could do today, but do wait until the last week of the month to, to swap out the campaign on the landing page, just to make sure, you know, if somebody signs up next Monday, we want them to receive the final message for April, right? We don't want them to wait two Tuesdays to hear from you. Make sense? All right, excuse me. So now let's get into what is in the Tip Tuesday emails for May of 2025. So the first week, we're going to be talking about hormonal balance. So here we talk about how scent influences hormone regulation and emotional well-being. We talk about essential oils that provide natural support for balance. And we feature the products Clary Sage and Pro Plus, right? So first week is all about hormone balance and scent influence on that. Second week is about skincare for radiance. Here we talk about how topical and aromatic plant extracts support skin health. And we share a recipe for a DIY body butter infused with essential oils for hydration and nourishment. And we feature the products frankincense and lavender. In week three, we talk about emotional well-being and the impact of aromatherapy on mood regulation, how scent and simple habits can influence emotional balance, and we feature products Joy and Orange. Week four, we talk about self-care practices, how incorporating essential oils into our self-care on a daily basis can promote stress relief and relaxation, and practical ways to integrate aromatherapy into a mindful routine. Featured products that week are Stress Away and Tranquil. Now, that's what we're getting. How many of you would like to actually just receive those so that you're reminded to take care of yourself, right? You could even opt yourself in for these and be delighted with the tips that you get in your own inbox. If you want to do that, you can actually opt in on your own landing page when you've got these campaigns connected, and you can make sure you're receiving these for yourself as well. Now, let's talk about best practices for success here. You want to make sure that you're sharing your landing page on a regular basis to bring in new leads. This means that you take the link to that landing page and you shared that in the, absolutely in the About section of your social profiles, all of them, right? This is actually, I would argue, more important than sharing your website homepage, right? And potentially, I would actually say definitely even more important than sharing your personalized link to Young Living's website. Because what this is, is a page that allows you to demonstrate that you offer something of value for free that people can take advantage of, and it allows you to capture their information so that you can connect with them on an ongoing basis every week, building a habit for them of opening your emails, of reading your messages, and eventually responding to them by taking action or hitting Reply. Because every single one of these emails is written to get them to engage. We're asking them to hit Reply and start a conversation with us in every single one of these emails. Because starting conversations with your leads and actually helping people connect things that are important to them, like their goals, their struggles, to products they can use, that formula is how you create customers for life, right? So we share this landing page on a regular basis so that we can build our list. We also want to share this with our customers. If you, if you get a new customer signed up, ask them if they would like to get your weekly tips, and you can have them sign up on this page as well. You also want to remind your customers about these. Many will sign up even after their first purchase, right? Don't automatically assume someone wants weekly tips from you. Please, please, please ask for permission. You can sign them up yourself, but it would be best if you get their permission first. Of course, with those who engage, those who respond to that pop-up question about their wellness goals, definitely engage with that. Of course, if somebody responds to any of these emails, they are always asking questions about goals or what they've done, what they've tried. Engage with them when they reply. That is your opportunity to move your customer toward their next hero product or that lead toward their first purchase. Then you want to make sure you're consistent, right? And it's easy to stay consistent when you're just swapping out this campaign once a month and sending it to the people who have already opted in, right? Your audience is going to expect and appreciate these weekly insights, and it takes very, very, very little work from you to keep this consistent. And then always make sure that your links are correct. These built-in links ensure that you receive credit for any purchases. And as of right now, these are set up for the US market. That's another reason why we're not doing this at the very end of the month. I want to give you time to make any modifications that you'd like. Maybe you want to change the subject matter, change your recommendations, add some of your own copy. Or if you want to make sure that those links are maybe swapped out for a different market, you've got the opportunity to do that as well. Of course, if you're utilizing the blog posts that we create for you to actually follow the steps here and access these resources, I can assure you that it's much easier to go in and create the links that you need, and then, of course, make those swaps where necessary. And we can show you how to do this here. Now, here's what I want you to do next. First, you need to claim and personalize your landing page if you haven't already. If you have not claimed it, that is definitely the first and most important step. You do not need to personalize your landing page if you do not want to. It is already set up and ready to go, and you can use it as is. And then you want to start sharing that landing page link with your leads and customers, and make sure that you are swapping out your campaign after the last Tuesday of each month, right? And then, of course, you want to make sure you're attending these calls. We do have plans every single month to show up on time to walk through this, remind you of how to do it, give you a reminder that this is a thing you need to put on your list of to-dos for next week so that you can swap these things out, update that campaign and get it out to your existing contacts. And then the more consistently you share and update this funnel, the more leads and customers you will nurture. So let's go take a quick look at where you can find these resources. There is a blog post that has all of them. It looks like this. And you can also, if you ever want to, on the Get Oil blog, click any of these, like the Done For You Content, Weekly Wellness Tip content, and it's going to show you all of the posts that apply here. Right now, we are in May. So I'm going to click to open this one. This is the one we're working with here. If you would like to claim the resource bundle for that landing page, if you haven't done so yet, go ahead and click this link here. And that's going to take you to a resource bundle where we can click here, claim the bundle, and then you will have this landing page in your account that you'll be able to use. Now, once it's there, I'll show you. Maybe you have a lot like I do, or you'll be able to see it on the screen. I'm going to search for it because I have a lot. I'm going to type in Tip Tuesday and search. This is the landing page that you are claiming from that bundle. And you can see all of the copy is here. Feel free to swap out images, swap around the wording if you like. I actually added this option for text in, which we talked about on a previous training. I am a really big proponent of email marketing. Even though text is a great way to connect with people with immediacy, it's not necessarily the best way to keep a lead engaged for the long run, right? It's a little bit too disruptive, and people react emotionally to receiving texts that don't fit where their life is in this very moment. And you are much more likely to lose your leads to that phenomenon than sending an email that they might go back and check later. So highly recommend that you do this via email. If you feel you must do this via text, there are certainly options to do so. All right, so this is the page. Obviously, you can change any of the things that are here if you'd like, but we're going to go into Settings. And you can see again, there, this is the message that they get that pops up. It's going to send them to the website homepage. You could choose to send them somewhere else if you like. Weekly Wellness Tips is the tag that we're using here. If you'd like to use a different one, you can X that out and put in something different. And then here we go. This is our Tip Tuesday, April 2025 campaign is what I have attached here currently. If you've just claimed this resource bundle, then you're not going to see any campaign here. It's going to say no campaign. Now, before I move forward, I want to show you what it looks like to claim this month's resource, right? So this month, May of 2025, we have a resource bundle here, and that is a campaign. Now, if you don't know what a campaign is, it is just a series of messages that are delivered at a specific interval. And here we can take a look at this. This is going to start delivering on May, well, it's day one. It begins technically delivering on May 5th, and one day from that is the 6th, which is a Tuesday. And so you can see that these actually deliver on the 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th. And all of these are here, as you can see in the dates. I'm going to go in here to click Edit Message Times and Animations. You can see that these are set up to deliver at 9:00 AM Central Time. You can make modifications to that if you choose. Before you go and apply this to your landing page, you do want to make any edits to the campaign that you want. Now, if you are someone who is in a different market and you want to change your, your specialized links to your products, let me show you the best way to get that done. My recommendation would be to go here and see this list, right? I'm talking about what's inside the campaign. This is in our blog post. And I tell you each of the products, right? So Clary Sage, Dragon Time, Blutans, Duranium, et cetera, right? So all the, the, the list of the, excuse me, the list of the oils and different products that are going to be used in the campaign are going to be listed out. Gather those, and then what you can do, coming back over to your campaigns, is, it looks like I might need to update that blog post because that's, yeah, oh, there we go. I told you wrong in the slides. These are correct. Sorry about that. So here we go. You can see here when we click the links, that there is this link here. I'm going to copy this and show you what this looks like. All right, so I'm going to zoom in on this real quick here. So you can see there's a Young Living link here, and it's got this code at the end, the sponsor ID, member number, and roller ID, member number, right? Now, you can see here as well that this is US English. You may choose to change this to something else, right? And so here's what I would encourage you to do. If this is something that you need to do, first, go to the blog post, of course, and grab the correct list of all the products that are going to be mentioned, right? So here again, May 2025, what are we talking about featured products, right? Make a list of each of these. And then what you're going to do is use this leaf link, which if you go over here to More Miscellaneous, click right here, Insert URL Link with My Member Number. We call this a leaf link. What you want to do is go over to Young Living and then select your market. So let's say you're in Canada. So I'm going to select Canada, English, or if you're in Canada, French, you get to choose. And that first product is Clary Sage. So I'm going to search Clary Sage. And remember, I am in the Canada, English. I'm going to copy this link here. And then I'm going to come back over to edit my message, excuse me, and I'm going to paste that link right here. And now you can see that I've got the correct market and language, excuse me. And it's got my sponsor ID and enroller ID here as well, right? So if you need to make changes to this, that's how you do it. You're going to take this link and you're going to copy it. And then you can come right here and paste, right? So put that updated URL in there, right? And so you're just going to do that, what, a total of eight times, which is pretty simple and straightforward. Another quick tip as well, if you wanted to maybe take the, the link from Young Living for each of your products, put those into a Notes app or a WordPress, or sorry, a word processor file. And then just take, once you create your leaf link, just take this end of the link, copy this, paste it onto Young Living's URL for the rest of those. And then you've got a document that you can use to just go in and update if you need to change, again, the market for the products that you're using, all right? So that covers how to, to edit your messages if you feel that you need to. Now, once you have edited your messages to your liking, provided that you need to, the final step is to gonna, is going to be to go over here to our landing page. Go to Settings, go here to Campaign, and let's type in Tip Tuesday, May. We can find that here. Click that, click Done. And this is the step you're actually going to do next week, right? Because we do still have here in April. Actually, it's going to be in two, two weeks here. So I would do this on the 30th if you are taking notes. Do this on the 30th of April. So that's going to be the last day of April, which is a Wednesday. So after this is sent out, if it is currently sending out, then you'll be able to get people set up for May if they sign up on this landing page. All right, so we got that done. We're going to save that. And now, when I look at my settings of my saved landing page, if anyone signs up on this page, you're going to have May of 2025's campaign applied. Next thing we want to do is go back to our dashboard. This is our final step. Send email, text, or app notification. Select Campaign. We're going to go Tip Tuesday, May. There it is. And then I'm going to send that by tag, and that is my weekly wellness tips. Click Send Campaign, and everybody who signed up previously is now going to start receiving those messages for May, the first week of May. All right, so let me see if we have any questions about this before we move forward. Excited to hear how this is working for you guys. Let me see. We've got some questions here. This content will be released a few days before the first of the month. So Anna, this content is always going to be released to you at least a full week before you would need to use it, right? So you're actually, because this, we're in April right now, and there are five Tuesdays in April. We are actually meeting a little bit earlier than I think we normally would from the end of the month. And that's just giving you the opportunity to just make sure that you're set. So I would just give yourself a reminder to swap out the campaign on your landing page on the 30th, or anytime the end of that week, and it just needs to be before that Tuesday. I would say definitely do it on the 30th if you're actively promoting that landing page because you want to make sure that people who sign up are going to be getting the next messages that come in, right? And then you can go ahead and just apply to people who have already signed up. You can apply that weekly wellness tips from May campaign to them because they're not going to get anything until May anyway. But yeah, we're always going to release that to you well before the first of the month. And the reason why is that these tips are not focused on the gift with purchase. Focusing on the gift with purchase is a great idea in theory, and it's a good thing for Young Living to do, and structurally, it's a good idea. But if you're focusing your life's work and how you like build your Young Living business around reacting to the gift with around reacting to the gift with purchase when Young Living is not even telling us what it is until the day it drops, or maybe if you're a diamond a few days before. It's just, it's, it's not a reasonable, healthy way for you to engage with your business. I don't want you on that hamster wheel. I want to make sure that you've got stuff that can go out regardless of what the gift with purchase is. It's seasonally relevant and you don't have to be in reaction mode for your business, right? Uh, so I would encourage you to look at this as a way to be delivering tips. But then maybe, maybe have like a weekly live event that you do, uh, where you talk about ways to use the products in this month's gift with purchase. Maybe do that midway through the month or something like that. Um, you know, maybe have your live content be centered around the use of, uh, the gift with purchase products. Um, that will keep you off the hamster wheel and allow, uh, you to be focusing on the things that grow your business, which is growing relationships, not like hustling to tell everybody what Young Living already said, which is really what the gift with purchase, uh, marketing, uh, really can feel like. Alright, Jolene says, if there's time at the end, I have a question about campaigns relating to events, how to make them start ASAP and also on a specific day. Okay, yeah, excellent. Will you pop your hand up for me, Jolene, and I'll make sure that I pull you out to chat uh, after I get through these questions, um, and if our, uh, live review is here after I speak with her as well. Okay, have a question today. I've just prepared my first lead magnet in Canva. Not exactly sure what I do next in terms of where I put the lead magnet so it automatically gets sent out. So Jennifer, there's a really great, uh, simple, easy resource. Uh, you know, shorter than watching a couple of episodes of your favorite show on Netflix, uh, that you can use. Uh, under the Success Academy. If you go over here to online resources and courses and you go to this, uh, Lead Generation Workshop. These are very short, very simple, very easy to follow. Um, basically the short answer for you, uh, definitely watch this. It's going to give you the whole picture and it even has templates for you. Uh, but where your lead magnet goes is ideally in the day zero message of your campaign. So you're going to put it into the files section here in your content library. And then when you create your campaign that goes out to people who opt in for that, um, on your landing page, that campaign is going to have a link to that file. But if you go here to the Lead Generation Workshop, it's going to teach you exactly how to do all of that in steps that you can slow down and restart and rewind and, uh, and use templates for. Alright, love the simplicity of this as I see how it will save me time. I've been spending, uh, sending my weekly emails without always talking about Young Living products, but also including ways to help themselves without trying to sell anything. I also send an eZine provided by my upline the first Tuesday of every month. Can this campaign be edited easily once I've opted, uh, and yes, absolutely. Um, this is completely editable. You could use all of what we've provided, you could use some of it, or you could completely rework it. It is 100% up to you. If you want the theme to be different, if you want the products you're featuring to be different, all of this is, uh, completely up to you. Um, can we make the phone number optional to, uh, to reduce the barrier to opt-in? If you're trying to focus on email, I actually recommend that. Uh, and you don't have to require the email, uh, the, the phone number either. So if you go to your landing page and you find your Tip Tuesday landing page, go to its settings. And then you can actually see what fields are required and what fields are shown. You can actually choose to not show the phone at all, right? Or you could even choose to show phone and require phone. So that is, uh, kind of up to your preference in how you want to, uh, gather information from your leads. Alright, Anna says, my website's branded to me, not Young Living, good. Uh, but I'd love to add the lead magnet to the wellness section of my website. Can you tell me how to do that or direct me to the easy button direction? So the easy button for this. Anna is going to be, uh, to come over here to your list of landing pages. You're going to copy this link and then create a section on whatever that wellness page is on your website that talks about your weekly wellness tips. And then this is the link where you put the call to action. So whenever they're on your, um, homepage or on your wellness page, you can say something like, I share tips every Tuesday. Uh, click here if you'd like to sign up for them and this is where they're clicking. This link that you can grab right here. And then you could just put that anywhere on your website. You can talk about it on social, put it in the description of your YouTube videos, put it in your about section on social, et cetera. Alright, Allison says, do you recommend sending the campaign the way you just showed? If you're doing that because I don't see who it's going to. So I normally go to contacts and filter for the tips tag, then select bulk ad campaign, seems more tedious, but that's the way I see who it's going to. Yeah, if, if you want to verify, but the thing is Allison, if somebody has that tag on them, it means that they signed up on that landing page. And that's really what the tags are for. It, it removes your need from having to go in and itemize exactly who's getting this, right? If they signed up, they have that tag, therefore you can filter for that tag and just send that campaign out. But that, the way that you're going about it isn't wrong. It is a couple of extra steps. Um, so though you could go either way, it's really up to you. But you don't have to verify because they have that tag for a reason. Alright, can you explain how to set up an email that goes out to our customers and prospects asking if they would like to opt into our weekly wellness tips? Um, also, I was just getting ready to offer a monthly newsletter. Was planning to send out an email informing people about it. I'm also planning to launch my new website on April 28th. Congratulations, Felba. Uh, could you give me some tips on how I could timeline all this? Is it good, is it a good idea to have a newsletter if we're offering the weekly wellness tips? So it depends on how often you want to send a newsletter, but, um, and, and, and you can choose to use this in several different ways, right? Like if the newsletter that you're planning to offer is something that is, um, general to leads, right? So something that, that's, you know, going to serve the interests of leads and it's not necessarily about customers. You may find that the tips don't necessarily align with the perspective that you have. Uh, so you could take this content, this weekly wellness content and modify it. And, you know, we, we do promise to give it to you with enough time for you to be able to modify it and make it your own if you wish. You could use this as a starting point for your own newsletter if you want to send something out on a weekly basis and see this as being combined together. Or if what you plan to send out to leads, for instance, deviates significantly in terms of, of topic uh, and product recommendation and things like that, then you might reserve this for your customers and just use this Tip Tuesday thing for your customers and have your separate, uh, newsletter that's more for your brand and your business. And in terms of the timeline, um, with a newsletter, you don't need, you know, your website homepage or any other part of your website fully finished or launched. Um, you just need the landing page for people to be able to go to. So I wouldn't worry too terribly much about that. The good news about creating things and showing up online is that nobody really cares anywhere near as much as you assume they do. Like no, nobody, nobody cares, right? So if you don't have everything absolutely dialed in perfectly, you're really the only person that's caring enough to notice that. So I think you can release yourself from some of the worries and concerns, just get it done. Um, focus always on the things that are going to allow you to collect uh, names and emails so that you can build your list, right? That's why a funnel is more important than a website, eight days a week, right? Because that's going to give you an opportunity to collect leads and to communicate with them. You could go your entire business existence without having a website homepage so long as you have a funnel that collects leads that's relevant to your following, right? So, um, I would maybe just kind of decide who your newsletter really needs to be for and what your goals are for it. What we've created here is a catch-all that can serve customers, can technically serve leads. If I had to choose between the two, it's going to be better for customers because it's talking about product and we're skipping the conversation, right? The consultative one-on-one conversation. If this is, you know, going out to leads, doesn't mean it's bad. Uh, but it is definitely more optimal for customers to receive this. So if you are planning on offering something that's significantly different than this, you could still do that, give that to your leads and then give this to your customers. And you could really roll them out whenever you want to. Okay, Tammy says, making sure I understand correctly, does it automatically populate our enroller ID? Uh, if we are in the English US? Yeah, absolutely. So when you signed up for Get Oiling, you gave us your member number. And so when that leaf link is used, which where we, we have, um, we, I've actually put in custom code into this campaign that has your member number. So it's going to put in your sponsor and enroller information as your member number that you gave us when you signed up. Right? So, um, yeah, this is automatically coded to you. You could actually just go ahead and opt into this, send it yourself, maybe send the test emails to yourself, click them and then you can actually see that you're signing up under yourself when you go to add that stuff to cart. Uh, so yeah, it's, if you are, um, English US, this is already done, you don't need to do a thing to it. If you're in a different market or you want to use this for another, uh, language, then you will, of course, want to make some modifications, uh, to the copy, uh, and then of course potentially to the links. Alright, what if they're on your list? Do you just put the tag on their info or ask if they want to be added? So ask them if they want to be added. Um, if you would like to send them, so here's, let me show you because there was a request here to send, uh, like how, how do I invite, right? So again, really easy for you, go to copy link right here and then go to your contacts. And maybe I want to send this just to my customers. So I'm going to filter, uh, for my contact type product customer. And I'm going to go to Actions, Mail. And then I'm going to say, uh, get my weekly tips. And here I'm going to say, join here. And I'm going to say weekly tips. And I'm going to hyperlink this and paste that link that I just copied to my landing page. And maybe I even want to turn this into a button. And of course, I want to say a bit more before I send this out, right? So if I wanted to send this to my customers, that's what I would do. I would take the link to the landing page and just send it out to them. Can you get a little more cute with this and create an automation that tags them with weekly wellness tips? And, uh, applies whatever the current campaign is, thus replacing the landing page? You could do that, but I'm not going to recommend it. Just send them the link to the landing page. Uh, if you want to, if it's someone who says just add me, if they give you verbal or permission otherwise, uh, then go ahead and apply this month's campaign to them and apply that tag, weekly wellness tips. And then Sean, from that point forward, every time you're filtering your contacts for that tag, you'll be able to, um, to send that out, uh, to everyone who said yes, including that person. Alright, Felba says, my newsletter is monthly and would be good for current customers, can be helpful for curious prospects. Yeah, so do both, why not? Um, and just, um, make it really clear the difference between the two, right? So if your monthly newsletter is going to maybe go more in-depth than these simple Tuesday tips, make sure that when you are offering that, that you're being very clear that this is actually a little different from your Tuesday tips and you may want to offer separate opt-ins for it, right? So it's a separate list. You've got your weekly wellness tips, maybe some people don't like getting emailed that often. Maybe they would like to actually sit down and read what you send out on a Saturday or a Sunday. If that's how you're going about doing it, uh, then I, I would make sure that there are separate opt-ins and that you're really, uh, kind of clearly defining, uh, expectations, uh, for what they can receive and win. Awesome, yeah, and you're going to want to offer both from your website. Alright, you don't have to select the contacts once you filtered them to send an email. That's right, yeah, if you've filtered for those contacts, they're auto-selected for the people that you're going to send a message to or apply a campaign to. Okay, so many great questions here today. Um, real quick, Heather, are you here? I'm going to allow you to talk here. I know you had requested, uh, help here today. Um, if you want to unmute, how can we help?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I, for the first time, am creating a funnel, the landing page and all of that, and it's a lot, it's a little overwhelming. So I didn't get as far as I wanted to before today, but I do have a landing page created. And there's a few things that I couldn't figure out and then, um, so I had a few questions about it.
Yep, go for it.
Um, so it's the ebook Budgeting for a Holistic Life.
Okay.
Okay, so I didn't know how to access my brand colors that are on my website. Um, and then, yeah, that box, it, for some reason it's blank and it's supposed to say, um, grab, yeah, see, it shows up when you go over it, but I don't know how. It's blank and then I can't, I couldn't get the color to change on the bottom button. And then I was to get this, that blue background. I was trying to get to be the color that's in my website, but I'm not sure how to quite do that.
Got you, got you, okay. So let me take a look at something here real quick. I would honestly, because it looks like you've got capacity for it at your plan level, where you're wanting to use a landing or you want to get the benefit of a landing page, but you want to be able to dial in the design on it. I would recommend just using a page. It gives you, so it, the, the controls are easier, um, I think, because these are really designed to be kind of limited and streamlined, right? So I would actually even recommend that there be a bit more space between these two sections, right? But there's not an easy way to do this in this simplified, um, sort of space that we have here. Uh, but this is actually going to be really easy to recreate, uh, as a page. So let me, let me actually show you really quickly exactly how I would do that. So under Pages, I'm just going to go ahead and add a new one and I'm going to make it blank. And this is, uh, also where it's going to, again, be very easy for you to utilize your brand colors. So the first section I'll add is a header, uh, which will be this one. And that's going to be this guy up here, right? Where you've got your header Bruce Coaching. And then I'm going to have a two-column section with a photo on the left. So I'll add one here. Photo on left. And then the one you have beneath that is the flip of that. So I'm just gonna, uh, duplicate that and switch the columns. There we go. And then we have our Lead Generation section down here at the bottom, uh, which what I'll do here is do a two-column section with a photo on the left, just like this, but I'll put a form on this side. So I'll duplicate that and send him down to the bottom. And here, I'll, I'll change that content out. So let's just take a quick look at what's here, that's basically it. Um, yeah, so, um, what I would go in and do here is just kind of swap everything. I think the final thing that's going to be important, uh, to adjust is like the form and how you have that set up, because that is the one thing that's just slightly more challenging if you're using a landing page and you're not 100% sure on, on how to, uh, get that set up. What I'll do here is I'm going to not use this text, oops. Just get a little happy with the backspace there. I'm going to put in form here. Alright, and there we go. So this is going to allow the form to appear here, just like it appears here. And then you can go up here to Settings. Leads. We're going to show it on the page, the form. And then you can kind of start to see how structurally, this is basically the same as your landing page, right? Um, this, we would, uh, change the background, you know, put the text over on the left, make it the right font, et cetera. Um, and then you would be swapping out the stuff that's here and here. And then you've got this guy. And this is going to allow you to create more space, right? But, uh, in between, so like on, for instance, uh, in between these two sections, I think these are a little bit cramped, right? Uh, so we can click the settings here and add some batting, uh, some background padding, uh, to the bottom of this one, for instance, right? And that's going to make it look so much nicer. Actually, I'm going to add some to the top as well. Uh, you want to maybe change this, uh, background color to this top section, uh, to something from your, uh, your color palette, which I assume this is not your colors, though.
Um, it doesn't look like it.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, here, I'm going to just call this, uh, Landing Page Template for you, uh, to work from, just so that it's, it's saved and more or less set up the way that you want it. Um, what we would want to look at in your colors, because it doesn't actually look like those are customized here. They're not. So what you're going to want to do, do you have them in Canva?
Um, well, I, yeah, I do have them in Canva. I don't have the Pro account anymore because there's also my, um, font that I was thinking, I like, is it good to keep kind of the font and the colors all kind of the same throughout everything I do?
Yes, yes, it is. Okay, yeah, yeah, that is quite important. It's, it's not the end of the world if you don't, but it's definitely, it's, it's, it's at least, at the very least a worthy goal. So if you can, you should. So what I would do is, and you actually don't have to have Canva Pro to take advantage of, of creating a brand palette. Um, if you go to, let me come over here, uh, to our Success Academy and I'll show you, actually, Brand My Business Workshop right here is going to have access to it. Um, let me see. If I type in branding, you're going to see a few, oh, here, yeah, here it is. I know it's old, but it's the same. Uh, so actually, if you click here, you, we've got all of the templates here that you could use. Here's the Brand Guideline template. Use this with a, what on earth? Just kidding, need to update that. We've got the, the updated version of it, I can. We've got the, the updated version of it, I can tell you confidently, is here in the, the Brand My Business Workshop. Uh, but basically it is a, it's a Canva, uh, design. And you can go in and copy the colors over the hex codes, et cetera. Uh, and if you have that maybe saved as a PDF, um, I haven't, before I had Canva, used, um. Keynote design.
Do you have a PDF saved with my colors and that? I think she did send me, I forgot about that.
Good, good, yeah. So what you want to do, uh, depending on your device, it's gonna look slightly different, uh, from, uh, device to device. So like, I'm on a Mac and when I click this, this is what it looks like. If you're on a PC, it's gonna look slightly different. Uh, but when you go to show colors, um, it's gonna give you options, uh, depending, again, it might look slightly different, uh, to enter your hex code. So you enter those here, um, or you could use, again, depending on your device, you could use a color picker. And go find a different color that's maybe elsewhere on the screen. Right? So if you have it open on the same screen, maybe have two windows open. Uh, one with that, uh, color palette and that PDF and the other with this. Uh, that's an easy way to go and, and basically use an eyedropper tool to click. And, um, and, and get that set up. And do this before you go and do any more design, uh, as well as getting your, um, your custom fonts uploaded. Uh, and our team can help you with that as well.
Okay. Um. Uh, let me see, I was gonna ask. Let's see. Um. Just had a few questions that I had written down. Um, so. For example, with the, you know how it says on the one spot, um, like a little box and it said, yes, send me more info?
Uh huh.
What, um, I didn't know if I felt like that was. What would be best for me to use? Like if they're already putting in their information, um, to get the free ebook, then what is that? You know, is that like for me to send them additional emails, basically?
So it's, it's essentially a way to, um. Have people confirm that they have signed up to receive information from you. It's gonna function slightly different depending on your market. So like in the EU, for instance, there are very strict, uh, regulations. And so you need to have very specific language and the sort of checkbox on a landing page like that. You do have the ability, so like on that page that I created for you, you can put a little message beneath. Um, and you can use, you know, opt-in information there as well, um.
So it is necessary to have that, though?
Um, on the, well, on the landing pages, like our landing page feature, a lot of things on there structurally, including that. Aren't really editable. They're a really great, quick and easy way to put together a simple landing page and that's kind of their purpose. Uh, but if you want to really get more specific, uh, on the design and how you want yours to show up. You really are just better served, uh, using, you know, more or less the same style to template out something that you want. And you can make modifications to what that landing page form looks like under settings here, if you go to leads, uh, message to show. Um, you've got your lead capture headline, but here, email and text opt-in notices. So this is actually, this is gonna serve the same purpose, uh, as that checked box would, right? So by submitting my email, I agree to, right? And that's really what that checkbox is on the, uh, on the landing page.
Okay. Um, so if I also need to create a waitlist. Um. What would I go under to do that?
Yeah, so we actually have a template that's perfect for this and there's a training. Uh, and the training, I believe, is still a hundred percent relevant, so let me just show you where that is real quick, um. We did one specifically, here we go, yeah, so this is, is that the one? Here, let me just show you the template and pages. Um, really easy to set up. Uh, you are gonna want to use a date-based campaign, of course. Uh, and a waitlist, if we go to add and we go over to landing and registration. Um. We've got one with a countdown timer here. That's a great option. Um, there's, you could use really any of the landing page templates that are here, uh, as well. And you could use this, you know, to design what you're, um, what you're offering on that other landing page now. Uh, but essentially what you do is, and again, you don't have to use the, the countdown timer, but it is a cool thing. Um, and this one has, um. Canva templates as well, uh, where you can kind of tell them about what it is and what they'll get and all that kind of good stuff, Q and As, et cetera. Um, but yeah, I would create a landing page, uh, with or without a countdown timer. And then just make sure that the campaign that you have attached to it is date-based. Um, if you want to, um. You know, if, if it's like a launch that's coming soon, or if you just want to have a, an immediate day zero message that goes out that says you're on the waitlist. Uh, you know, you'll hear from me soon, right? And you want to just keep it ambiguous, you don't know when you're launching something. You, you don't necessarily have to go. What's that?
I don't have a date of, I haven't finished the course yet.
Okay, yeah, so in that case, don't go date-based. Uh, just make sure that you are continually engaging that list, right? Make sure that you're, you're, you know, sending a broadcast out to keep that list engaged, so that they are primed to respond when you do launch it.
Okay.
So yeah, in that case, you would definitely, uh, maybe not need to use a countdown timer. Uh, you could use, um. I mean, really any number of things, it's just, it's a landing page, right? So you could say coming soon. Uh, tell them what it's going to be, what it's going to do, and then let them know that they'll be the first to learn about it, uh, launching. Um, I would argue though, that the, the better thing to focus on, unless you've already got people who are expecting to buy a course from you. I would focus on using your lead magnet as opposed to talking about the course before you launch it. Because people are only excited to buy something if they already know that it's going to solve a problem, uh, that they have. And it's usually not going to be the best approach to tell them that you're gonna sell them something soon, right? As opposed to saying, hey, do you have this problem and starting the conversation? Because by the time you've got the course ready, you've got a group of people who are already listening. Because you're talking about something that matters to them. And then when you say, hey, by the way, I've got this course, they're already listening, they already trust. And like the, the listening is contextual to the problem that the course solves. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Well, feel free as you're continuing to work on this to come back and, and we can work through any of that here.
Okay, and then the training, was that the one that you had shown in here to go to?
So for the waitlist, I actually, you know, I might be conflating that with our Attract Well platform. Um, which, I mean, anything that you see on our Attract Well YouTube, anything that we teach you to do there, you can do and get oiling. It just tends to be sometimes a little bit more advanced, uh, for, uh, for a lot of folks who use Get Oiling. They're not necessarily interested in creating courses and things like that. Uh, let me see if I can find that here real quick and I'll show you. Um. Oh yeah, wait, that's exactly what I was thinking it was. Let me share my screen here and show you exactly, uh, what it is. Uh, waitlist funnel, right here. Uh, I'm gonna copy this and pop it into the, uh, into the chat. And, uh, and you can check that one out. So, um, yeah, that, that would be the one to, to check out if you want to do a waitlist for a course.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, Jolene, let me bring you out. Hey, how can we help?
Hi, um, so I, I'm setting up, um, events. And I'd like to be able to have an event, a campaign that goes out for the event that says like, hey, thanks for registering today. Like say you registered and it's today, but the event's not for like, I don't know, a week or two. But yet I want to be able to send out a very specifically dated and timed email. So that it's like, hey, our, our, our event's tomorrow and oh, no, it's today and it's in an hour, that kind of thing. So I just don't know, I think I did it and then I did it wrong, cause my, the one that I registered for myself, it came like the next day after the event.
Yeah, so you're gonna create a date-based campaign. And the day zero message is going to be your confirmation. Hey, you're signed up, here's what you can expect, et cetera. And then what comes next and how you date it is going to kind of depend on whether or not you plan to send emails leading up to it. I highly recommend that you plan to do that, right? So if you've got an event and maybe it's two weeks out, if you want to ensure that somebody, that the people who register are actually gonna show up for it. You need to be in their inbox every week, um, keeping them engaged, because they will forget. Completely, even if you, you put it on their calendar, et cetera, be in their email, um, you know, maybe a, once a week or more. Uh, kind of getting them excited about it, uh, or, um, you know, talking about relevant topics. So with, to that end, I would plan on releasing again at least one email in this campaign per week. Uh, leading up to that live event. And so, um, look at your calendar. And then you're going to, you know, basically say, what is day one? Right? Like, when am I sending the first email in this series? Is it, is it two weeks ahead of time? Is it a week ahead of time? Uh, what day of the week is that, that I'm talking about this? Am I gonna send an email before, right? And so that's where you can kind of start to play with the numbers such that, uh, the, the campaign applies the day before. You would send the, um, that first, you know, message the week before, right? So if you're wanting to send it on a Tuesday, you're gonna want to set that campaign up to, uh, have Monday be the Sunday. And then Tuesday is gonna be when they see that, you know, hey, we're gonna meet in a week, right?
Okay, so if I'm gonna, I, so I was pulling up the campaign as you were talking and I missed the very first part. Where you said the campaign's gonna be date-based and if I, if I have an event on, um, May tenth. But I want the day that you register for it is the first, how do I meet, what is that day?
So the day you register for it is day zero. And so that's what you do. If you, if you want to send that, hey, welcome, your seat is saved. Here's what to expect, et cetera, that's day zero. And regardless of what the send date of the campaign is, that, that campaign could start sending in a month. But they're gonna get day zero exactly when they sign up, no matter when they sign up.
Okay.
So use day zero for that. And then, um, and then again, you would set the start date of that campaign. So let's just say, so the event is on, uh, May tenth.
Sure.
So, um, so you would have, um, at minimum, you know, you would have an email that goes out the week of April twenty ninth. Right? So let's just say that you want to send that, uh, message out on, um, on Friday, May first. You know, hey, excited to see you next week. Then, uh, you would, the start date of the campaign would be May first. And then day one would be that, um, that Friday, right? Where we'll say, you know, hey, remember we're meeting next week, here's some things you can do this weekend, you know, whatever it is that you want to say. And if you want to send something the day before, uh, then, you know, how many days is that? One, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, so day nine, uh, is going to be a reminder, hey, we're meeting tomorrow. Day ten is going to be the day of the event. Right? And so that's allowing you to factor in sending out messages ahead of time as well.
So day one is technically the day after start date, but day zero is always like the ASAP message.
Day zero is always ASAP, day one is going to be, um, the day after your start date.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, because if, so if you want to send something, uh, you want to make sure that something goes out at nine AM on May first. Then day one, right, i- is, y- you're actually going to, if you want day one to be May first. Then you start the campaign on April thirtieth.
Okay, okay, I got it. Okay, cool.
Awesome.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, of course, that we can help. All right, had a couple more questions here from Allison before we get going. Thank you guys for sticking around, having such great questions and doing awesome work. Allison says, if I put in the hex number for colors, will it automatically change my, all of my current pages to match or only new pages going forward? So it's not going to change your pages per se, it is going to change your fonts. So if you have your menu fonts selected in a particular color, your text fonts and in a particular color, your links, your link hovers. Things like this, your colors will change there. But if you have maybe used a color palette to build pages in your system and you've got section backgrounds, button colors, et cetera. You're gonna want to go and make those changes. Obviously, apply whatever your color palette is to all of your buttons. So that wherever your buttons are, they're going to show up with the correct color palette. Um, but anything that's like a page background, or if you're using icons created in Canva, they're on your pages, things like that. It's not going to just blanket apply new colors, uh, to your system. You will need to go to your pages and maybe change background colors. Uh, swap out, uh, button colors, et cetera. All right, I found my brand colors in Canva. How do I know which to put where? Is there a best practice for what colors to be the link menu text, et cetera? Uh, legibility is really the, the best practice. Uh, so if you are going to be using white background, which is standard website practice. Uh, use dark colors, right? So if that's a navy, if that's a dark green, I think black is a really good place to stick with your text colors. Uh, but maybe your brand colors, provided that they are legible on your backgrounds. Your brand color could be used for the links, right? So instead of having the standard, uh, internet blue link color, you could use something a bit different. Um, you could change the color when someone hovers over as well, so that's the link hover. So there's link color, link hover. That's a great place to utilize color, uh, and then absolutely use it in your, um, secondary colors. Use it in your buttons, right? Uh, generally speaking, uh, you're gonna want to use color as an accent, as a punctuation. You don't want to detract from, uh, from the copy and what you're saying. All right, your registration campaigns are normally just three messages. Okay, day zero, thanks for registering. Uh, day before, see you tomorrow, day after, thanks for coming and more info. Should I add more if the event is a certain amount of time later? And how much ahead? So I kind of spoke to this a little bit with Jolene. Uh, but generally speaking, if you are, um, promoting an event that is many weeks in advance. It is really important for you to, uh, stay in their inbox, right? So again, sending at least one email a week prior to keep people engaged, because they will forget. And the whole point of having an event is for people to show up. And you put in all of this work, you want to make sure that they're actually going to do that. Uh, and so staying top of mind is how you do. So at least once a week. Absolutely, the day before or forty-eight hours before, and maybe even the morning of, depending. Uh, you know, you want to reiterate locations, things like that. If it's on Zoom, um, I think day before, day of is fine. Uh, and then of course, once a week leading up to, certainly a confirmation email when they register. Um, you may choose to do a bit more than that. If this is something that's in person, you may want to drip out FAQs, uh, ahead of time. You're gonna get a lot of different options where that's concerned, just make sure that you are, uh, staying top of mind. So I'm doing a quarterly event and they're up on my site. Should I open registration later or set up a campaign to come once a week? It kind of depends. Uh, I don't think either of these are a wrong approach. Um. I think that people, if they're into what it is that you're offering. Um, I think that some people really are the types that like to plan in advance. They like the idea of having something like that available sooner. Just make sure that you've got some emails, uh, queued up in that date-based campaign, uh, to keep them engaged up until that point. Um, you don't have to do that, though. Um, you could open registration maybe three or four weeks ahead of time. Uh, which is also a very reasonable amount of time as well. So, um, in any case, you know, make sure that you're, you're touching them on a weekly basis with email. Uh, no matter how far out it goes, and there is no harm in having things planned out up on your website and available for registration. Uh, far in advance. It's good for you, because you aren't scrambling at the last minute, you can work intentionally. And of course, it's good for people who, uh, who like to plan, so we like those. Okay, thank you guys so very, very much, uh, for sticking around, for having great questions, for doing great work. Uh, and for carrying on the work of Gary. So we appreciate you and are, uh, of course, looking forward to being back here with you again next week. If you are going to be, uh, seeing me and Julie in July, we're excited to see you there. Get your tickets, go to Aroma Sharing. Uh, we're excited to be sponsors, uh, there again this year. All right, I hope you guys have a great week and we'll see you next time, same time. Take care, everybody.